Seven o'clock, and I will call the meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and trustee Hylandbach, please read us a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Trustee DeCosta.
Present.
Clerk Reyes, here. Supervisor Wilt.
Present. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, first on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of the August 8th board meeting. What is your pleasure?
I'll make that a motion to accept the minutes of trustee.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Carroll, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2023, of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees. Are there any additions or corrections?
Um, I have a, maybe a clarification, maybe a correction. It's on page three, under number one farmer's market, the second line where it says 91 vouchers from eight markets. Does that mean, should that word be vendors?
No, that was eight dates of markets.
Oh, eight dates, okay.
Yes, there were eight days of markets at that point, and 91 vouchers had been redeemed.
Okay, so it should be eight days.
Yes.
Or eight markets.
Or we had reimbursed for eight, um, for 91.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they could go to like the Brookfield.
No, 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 it's all from one, one market, but it's different days of the market.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that.
No problem, any other questions, additions or corrections? Then hearing none, all in favor of accepting those minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion is carried.
I abstain, I was asked.
Thank you, yes, thank you very much. All right, uh, next up is the, uh, we have the minutes of the September 5th Committee of the Whole, and thereby the, um, the official, um, efficiency, decennial efficiency committee. Are there, uh, do I hear a motion on the, these minutes?
A motion, we approve the minutes for September 5th, 2023.
Second, I have a motion by trustee Hylandbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the committee minutes of Tuesday, September 5th. Uh, and are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, then all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay, motion is carried. Thank you. All right, um, next item is, are there any communications?
We have two pieces of communication, supervisor Wilt. Uh, we, we mentioned one of these last week, and so it's probably worth bringing up again, but it's a, a invitation from Aging Care's Connections to attend their super, their sports ball 2023 on Friday, September 15th.
I think their online auction is already open.
And the second item is a flyer from, uh, I believe, um, Assessor Sitkowitz, related to her upcoming how to appeal your property tax assessment that she's co-hosting with, um, Board of Review Commissioner George Cardenas, and that event will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, September 13th, at 6:00 PM here at Riverside Township Ball, second floor.
Thank you very much. Um, there being no action needed on those, we'll proceed to reports.
Supervisor.
I'm sorry, yes.
I would like to, uh, suggest we move up the old business part A of the grant, so our guest doesn't have to be.
Thank you, uh, if there are no objections, we will move to new business, so that we don't keep the chief here. Is that, is that all right? And if you would please, um, approach the microphone, identify yourself, and then just give us a brief overview, we all have your, uh, your complete application for a grant.
Okay, thank you. Well, first let me apologize for, uh, my last minute cancellation of last month. It was, uh, not something I could have planned for, so, but, um, so thank you for taking me tonight and, and hearing this. Um, but, uh, just briefly, um, actually, just a little background on myself, I've been with the Brookfield Fire Department for three and a half years. Uh, I actually grew up in Brookfield, and it's actually my hometown, so it's actually an honor to be back, uh, as part of, uh, my, my home community. Since, since I left, I've been in Westchester, where I spent my career and live currently, and, uh, again, very similar communities, but, uh, very proud to be back here, uh, back in Brookfield and being a part of the community. But, uh, since I've been here, I've just identified lots of, uh, needs, um, that, uh, to help protect, uh, my firefighters, as well as help our residents as much as possible. Uh, one being, uh, which I'm bringing to you tonight, is, um, uh, the request for assistance to help fund, um, power, uh, battery-powered stair chairs. Uh, currently, uh, it's, it's a newer product that's on the market. Um, it's been out for about a little less than a year now. But, um, currently, when we move patients, whether it's in an emergent situation, in tight situations where we have to bring them up or downstairs, or, um, or there's many times we have these patient assists, where we just assist them out to the car for doctor's appointments, and then when they come back, um, uh, frequently that happens, um, all, all fire departments do that as well. Um, with that comes the risk of injuries, um, and the safety of our patients. So, um, these powered stair chairs now, uh, actually make it, uh, very, uh, and not painless, but, uh, relatively easy to move patients up and down the stairs without, with protecting, uh, the patient's safety, as well as, um, our firefighters' backs, knees, and shoulders, um, which can be very expensive and, and many times career-ending, um, situation. So, I, I come to you tonight, uh, I have, with my research that I've done, it's been over 10 years, I think, since the Brookfield Fire Department's actually even approached the board, uh, requesting any type of grant funding, last thing I could see was in 2012. Um, and, um, I had, I had reached out with, Ms. Wilt gave me some, some guidance here too, because I'm new to this process. Um, I had reached out because Brookfield being part of three townships, I have reached out to Proviso, I have reached out to Lyons, two to three times now with no, no response, um, which I find really unusual, um, to see what type of financial assistance they may have available. Um, so obviously with no response, I, there's no financial assistance. But also to help fund this, um, my request, I've, I'm also in the process of, um, trying to secure up to a $2,500 grant with our risk management company, Irma, who has grants for patient moving equipment grant, um, uh, finances available. We do run two frontline ambulances every day, um, so in order for, uh, uh, this is, this, this request is come all on you, this comes on the Village too, you know, on the Village of Brookfield as well. So whenever we buy, uh, equipment for the ambulance, it's bought in pairs. That way, um, we know we always have the equipment in town if one of the ambulance has, happens to be tied up on a call. Um, that way, residents reserve, uh, receive the same level of service. They wouldn't receive a lesser level because one ambulance wouldn't have that particular piece of equipment, so. Um, so I, basically to make a long story short, uh, I'm coming to just request, uh, some possible financial assistance through the form of a grant to help offset some of the costs. Uh, this is very expensive equipment, each one is $15,000. Uh, that's signed, sealed, and delivered, you know, no hidden costs with that. Um, and then the expected, uh, uh, what I've been told, the expected life, uh, span of this equipment is anywhere from seven to 10 years. Uh, we use it not only in Brookfield, we do go mutual aid to Riverside, North Riverside, Lyons, LaGrange, you know, the whole area, as, as well as they come to us. So, uh, again, yeah, it serves Brookfield primarily, but we go everywhere, and, uh, we work together with our partners around us, so, um, do you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, uh, chief, I mean, I know that, you know, Brookfield especially has a lot of apartment buildings.
Yes.
Especially on the south end, and it seems that every ambulance call that I hear is the third floor. And, you know, those chair stretchers are, I mean, they do the job, but the wear and tear, um, on not only the patient, as the chief said, but the medics, is unbelievable. And I know that the chief has had back injuries due to this, um, you know, slipping, coming down the stairs, where this chair will make it almost seamless for them. It'll, it'll save, save them a lot of, uh, a lot of headaches, and it also helps off the patient, because it's more comfortable than the chair stretcher, am I right?
And it, and it's a little more predictable, because it literally can ride the stairs, whereas when you've got two guy, two or three guys in a tight stairway trying to muscle it down, it's, it jiggles a lot. So, this, it comes, helps control the ascent or descent, depending on which way you're going up and down the stairs, which, uh, helps the patient relax a little bit, which a lot of times is part of the problem with them reaching all the time.
In your grant request, you have a, a grant request for one of these. Do you have funds available to help you fund this?
The Village, because, uh, we have recently actually had an individual go out on a career-ending injury as a result, actually of a patient assist, not even, uh, a true all-out emergency. Um, yeah, they're, they're committed to buying, uh, the second one, yes.
So, um, so you, they're gonna buy the second one, you're looking for some funding.
Some funding, yes.
For the first one.
Yes, and again, anything would be greatly appreciated.
I think it's a great idea, I've seen these in action personally, they're amazing, and, uh, you know, the number of Riverside Township residents that will be assisted with this is 3,250 people, and there are a lot of ambulance assists. I know, uh, being my folks live in Riverside, uh, when my father was alive, we had the fire department there quite often, and they always came with a smile, so. I think anytime, and the other thing is, is they haven't applied for a grant since 2012, did you say, chief?
Yeah, yeah, and the two that I could find in our files, which they kept files on everything, uh, were in 2005, I think for a couple of portable radios, and then in 2012 for a thermal imaging camera.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we always provide what we've had in the records, and we, there certainly hasn't been anything since 2018, so, yeah, we only keep five, um, basically five or six years on these, and, uh, there certainly hasn't been anything. Is, is it similar to what like furniture movers, where there's like a, it almost walks the stairs as a slide?
It actually has, um, uh, like a track that, um, after, when we get there and set it up, it kind of kicks back to an angle, um, and basically.
I see, I see the picture, but it doesn't really. So it works kind of like a tank then?
Yeah, it's kind of like a tank, and that way it can go over the stairs without bouncing down every stair, or bouncing up every stair, it kind of, uh, levels it out and, and allows it a smooth transition. Again, uh, definitely smoother than a couple of, uh, personnel, again, struggling.
You've gone to Lyons Township and Proviso, and they have not gotten back to you?
They have not gotten back to me, I've sent them, uh, a couple of emails, I can actually even read you the emails that I've sent them.
I believe you.
But, yeah, yeah, so.
Is there a history for like splitting those between the three townships, or no?
Well, that's why I suggested that, you know, because we do have a portion of Brookfield, but there's a larger portion of both of those other townships, that you, you approached them too.
They do come, I think you're first in for mutual aid to Riverside now, am I right?
Yes, yep, yep.
So they do come to Riverside quite frequently. When Riverside's ambulance is out, they have to call a second ambulance, it's Brookfield's ambulance.
Actually, since I've become chief, actually, um, Chief Buckley's has asked me to, uh, if we could be their actual second ambulance in, and I don't have a problem with, and we haven't had a problem with that for sure, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a quick question for the system itself, uh, the charging system, do the ambulances have to be outfitted differently to charge the batteries, how does that work?
They don't, um, there'll be a bank of, uh, kind of like what we do with our cardiac monitors, and actually our stretchers that we have, uh, we have a bank that we keep in the firehouse every shift. It gets rotated, whether it gets used or not, it gets rotated daily, so there's always a fresh battery to go. Um, and, and this can be moved without the battery, if necessary, kind of like the old chairs we had, a little bit heavier, because now it has a motor and a battery on it, but, uh, if it had to be, it could still be moved that way, but that's not the intent of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we grant the Brookfield Fire Department the amount of the grant request for $14,884.80. They don't come to us at all.
I have a motion to, okay, I have a motion by trustee Hylandbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the requested amount of $14,884.80, especially in view of this being a rare ask from, uh, the Fire Department of Brookfield. Is there any discussion? Then, uh, if the clerk would please call the roll, so that we can see how we vote on this.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Unanimous vote?
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much.
We'll be in touch, with, the, the one thing is that because we're both taxing bodies, we do not grant the money to Brookfield.
Okay.
So much as, when you're ready to purchase it, we will cut the check directly to the company.
Oh, to the vendor, okay, oh, super, not a problem.
Also, you know, Riverside Township came through for the Village of Brookfield Fire Department, you made sure that we get some kudos for that.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
We can put some stickers on the chair.
You have stickers, I'll put them on, trust me. But thank you so much, I appreciate all your time and your, your patience to, to go another month with this as well, I really do, so, but thank you guys.
I do have one quick question, chief, what is the out time on putting it in service?
Um, it depends how quickly we can get it, I want to say it's, uh, probably about a two to three-month delivery.
Okay.
Um, at this point, so, um.
You'll let us know when it's in service?
Oh, for sure, for sure, I'll, I'll even bring one.
I'll fall down on perp for something.
I'll bring here, and we'll get you guys a ride up and down the stairs on everything, so.
Thank you.
It'd be nice to see how it works.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Very good. So now we will return to our agenda, as it was suggested. Uh, okay, we have the supervisor's report. Uh, I have nothing special to report about the township this month, except that the improving economy is not trickling down within our boundaries, from what I can tell. General assistance and emergency assistance kept me busy, but I'm happy for some, uh, some people starting to find employment. Unfortunately, others are facing eviction, because despite our help, it was simply not enough to catch up, and those people are leaving our jurisdiction. Uh, the food pantry continues to be busy, and new people sign up seemingly every week. We have had at least 93 households come for food pantry at least once this year. 63 people have been here at least once within the months when we've been distributing farmer's market vouchers. So through today, we have distributed 500 vouchers, uh, for the farmer's market, and as of last week, we have redeemed 247 of them, for a total of $1,235 so far. Uh, just today, a resident came in looking for volunteer opportunities, so she will start helping pack bags in the food pantry this week, which will free up some time for our custodian, who's been doing that lately. Uh, we had the second-floor carpeting shampooed over the Labor Day weekend, and I also had them do the old upholstered rose-colored chairs up there. Those still could use recovering, but they look much better. Uh, this Friday is the North Riverside Autumn Fest and Chili Cookoff, and trustee Hylandbach and I will represent the township. Uh, let me know, as I said, if you have any problems with producing the chili.
I am vectored in.
You're all, okay. And on a personal note, if anyone has not yet heard, I have a new grandson, who was born on September 8th. Thanks to everyone who's extended good wishes, mom, dad, and baby Garrett Joseph are doing well and they're home. So that is the extent of my report tonight.
Um, Vera, how many, did you say 93 households over the year, the?
In, since the first of the year, in this calendar year, we have had, um, 93 individuals, and that always represents a household, um, come in for a food pantry at least once, and most of them more than once. So, yeah, uh, I don't ever remember in my term having that many people. I, I'm very pleased that people have discovered the food pantry and keep discovering it on a regular basis, but that's a, it's a lot of people they need. Any other questions? I'd gladly respond if there's anything else. Okay, the assessor, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Fran Sitkowitz, the township assessor, and we are open for appeals. So, um, the Cook County Board of Review opened Riverside Township, along with four other townships, uh, yesterday, for appeals through October 10th, so the deadline to file a 2023, um, appeal will be October 10th. Um, the Board of Review is a second and final chance for, for taxpayers to appeal at the Cook County level. Um, we are having an outreach, thank you for mentioning that, Jay, uh, Wednesday night with Commissioner Cardenas, and we have some other local offices coming to talk about some of the services that they provide, especially, um, I think a couple of those, those offices have been working with people with flooding. And although Riverside, the Village of Riverside has not had a lot, I think some, more people to the west of us have had some issues, so. So, we thought we'd bring in some people who could help answer those types of questions. Um, so our office is gonna be very busy over the next month. Um, expect a lot of coming and going, but we got a good start with the, uh, re-review process. So we're grateful that the Board of Review gave us about 10 days to start, um, filing appeals online and collect data, um, before the actual opening. So we got a good head start, we were able to schedule, people coming in, have been coming in since last week. So we feel confident that this session, we will be able to service everyone who needs to file an appeal.
Thank you.
That's where we're at. Any questions?
Keep up the good work.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I don't go anywhere representing the township where somebody doesn't come up to tell me what a jewel you are.
Oh, thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, trustees, we'll start from my left today, trustee DeCosta, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, supervisor, no report.
Thank you, trustee Carroll?
Nothing today, thank you.
Trustee Clark?
Um, exercise class continues to go well, we had 269 participants in August. Um, and, you know, registration is open for the Township officials' meeting in November, that's gonna be November 12th through the 14th.
Very good, thank you. And trustee Hylandbach?
Uh, the next mental health board meeting will be next Wednesday, September 20th, at, uh, 7:00 o'clock in this room, and, uh, I have no other report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the clerk? Okay, thank you very much, and we will move on, we've already covered the whole business, uh, grant, and new business, as I indicated in an email earlier today, although we had hoped to have our auditor here today, I just got the first draft, uh, in the email today, I have forwarded to all of you, and he is planning to be here at our next meeting, uh, in October. And at that time, um, we, we can approve the audit at that time, because he's filing an automatic extension with the Controller's Office. And the information that is in the audit should be, uh, the numbers should be, uh, secure enough for, and, uh, accurate for the treasurer's report, which I have to file with the county by the end of this month. So we are on the way, and next month we should hear more, and you please prepare, look over the, the information that was forwarded to you, and be prepared if you have any questions. For Ed Tracy, he expects to be here at our next meeting.
Will the treasurer's report have to be extended as well, or?
I don't think so, um, he assured me that the numbers, that they stand by the numbers, so it's really just a matter of, if there's any, um, it might be some corrections to typographical errors or something like that in, in the language of the report that might happen between now and the final, uh, edition. So he assured me that the accountant is good to go in, uh, preparing from what they've provided.
Thank you.
We always wait, because sometimes the auditors find something that there needs to be an adjustment, and how, how things are reported.
Good.
All right, and so we are up to the approval of warrants. Trustee DeCosta?
Thank you. Make a motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, September 2023, in the amount of $18,296.34, as presented to this board 12th day of September, 2023.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee DeCosta, seconded by trustee Hylandbach, to approve the general warrants for September 2023, in the total amount of $18,296.34. Are there any questions, um, or corrections, any comments? Hearing none, then clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, September 2023, in the amount of $1,139.25. Payroll warrant, September 2023, in the amount of $16,991.40. Health warrant, September 2023, in the amount of $2,983.42. General assistance warrant, September 2023, in the amount of $12,177.83. And food pantry warrant, September 2023, in the amount of $1,634.48. All of the above as presented to the board this 12th day of September, 2023.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, motion by trustee DeCosta, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the following warrants, with the following amounts for September, 2023. The utility warrant in the amount of $1,139.25. The payroll warrant in the amount of $16,991.40. The health warrant in the amount of $2,983.42. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $12,177.83. The food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,634.48. Are there any questions? Then hearing none, uh, clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, and that, um, are there any public comments? I don't hear anybody, I don't see anybody outside of the elected officials in the room with the, uh, with our township attorney. So if they're hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just, uh, I think we should mention the date of our next shredding event? Oh, which is October, yes.
21?
Yes, I believe that's the date. October 21st, from 9:00 to 12:00, at the Masonic Lodge?
Yes, that is correct, from 9:00 to 12:00, um, the 21st of October, and everybody should be looking for the, uh, the Township newsletter in their mailboxes. It was, uh, just shipped today, I think it was dropped at the post office today, so. Look for all the information there, there'll be information about a number of other programs that we have, so, uh, thank you for bringing that up. Also, if any of the, um, directors, the trustees rather, have not yet let me know about the Person of the Year, the Person of the Year Dinner, please let me know because I want to make that reservation by tomorrow.
Yeah, tickets are only on sale until Thursday.
I know, right.
When is that again, I'm sorry?
Uh, they have to be purchased by Thursday.
Oh.
Oh, it's on the, it's on the 20th.
Wednesday, October 20th.
September 20th.
Yeah, September 20th, I'm sorry.
September 20th, which is next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow.
Six o'clock at the Riverside Golf Club.
I gotta pay you for the wipes.
Sure. So if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Trustee Clark moves to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, trustee DeCostela seconds, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you very much.